Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council of the Town of Atherton to order for June 19th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Shall we begin?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Wees?
Here.
Councilmember Dobby?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Here.
Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. Thank you very much. So, we have a very, very full agenda tonight. And we're going to start out with our presentations. And we have two proclamations to present, and then we have a presentation from A-BAG on the One Bay Area Plan. So, I'm going to reorder the agenda just a little bit, and I'm going to honor Helen Hausman, who is a longtime resident of Atherton, and give her a proclamation because of her service to our county and to our town. So, Helen, I'm going to come down and talk to you. Thank you. So, Helen, why don't you come over here and just stand here next to me? Okay? I will read it for you, okay? Helen has been an elected official for many, many years, and so she has retired this year. And Senator -- Congresswoman Jackie Speer wrote her a proclamation, and it is in the Library of Congress today as we sit here honoring her years of service. And I thought, you know, Helen has been such a steadfast member of our community and the Danes that we should honor her too. I can't guarantee that my proclamation as mayor is going to be in the hallowed halls of the Library of Congress, but we know it's in our hearts and you're in our hearts.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to just say that whereas Helen Hausman was born in New York and moved to California in 1960 with her husband, Arthur Hausman, who's here with us today. And whereas Helen, a longtime resident of Atherton, is and has been a member of the Atherton Danes for many years, hosting lunches and meetings at her lovely Lindenwood home and serving as the parliamentarian for many years of the Danes, and she currently is the parliamentarian. So, whereas Helen has served with dedication and leadership as a trustee of the San Mateo County Community College District for 23 years and 13 years on the Sequoia Union High School Board. And whereas Helen earned her BA in Education from George Washington University, where she was the only woman in her class, and then she went on to teach grammar school in Maryland. And whereas Helen's passion for excellence in education has spanned decades of service on many committees and boards, such as, it's a long list, Association of Community College Trustees, Community College League of California, and the San Mateo County School Boards Association. And she's currently a member of the American Association of University Women. Oh, and her grandson came.
You know, this is a lovely surprise. My grandson just arrived, and my son.
Yay!
These are true Athertonians.
Yes, thank you. So glad you came. So, I was just saying that she's listed in the Who's Who of American Women and has been inducted into the San Mateo County Women's Hall of Fame, as well as being elected to Pi Lambda Theta, a National Honor Society for Educators. And, this is the key, whereas Helen's dedication and no-nonsense leadership has allowed her to navigate the turbulent times in California's higher educational systems, she has always retained the core purpose of the district in preparing students for four-year universities and colleges. And so, this is my great honor by the authority vested in me as mayor of the Town of Atherton. I do hereby congratulate Helen Hausman on her retirement and express my sincere appreciation for her service to our community. Elizabeth Lewis Neer. And I'm going to give you a little pin. It's our Atherton tree pin that you can wear. It's like this. We wear it.
That's lovely.
And your proclamation.
And you know, when you started the recognition of trees, one of our trees was the first recognized.
Oh, now, we should start that again. Don't you think we should do that, Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you, Helen. Do you want to say something?
Well, thank you. First, Mayor, those, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, at the time I was involved with the schools, with the Red Cross, with the different organizations in our county, I didn't think so much of the big picture as this is important, it's interesting, there are wonderful people I'm working with, and I loved it. And I really did not think in terms of receiving any kind of accolade or award, what have It's really very, very special to have had the opportunity, because sometimes when you're offered something, you have to learn to say yes, because you don't know what's coming until you are deeply involved in it. And I had experiences which were incredible with the people I met, the things that I worked on. That wouldn't have happened if I had been in the background and said, "No, I don't think I'll do that." And we had some really hard times in our area. You know, for one thing, the Menlo Park School District was on, and Menlo Atherton, we were under court order desegregation. And I could write a book just talking about how we handled that. And my son, in fact, was very involved in Menlo Atherton in doing a fantastic fundraiser so that some of the youngsters who didn't have that much could have a baseball glove and participate in things. And that means a great deal, and that indeed is part of your education also. You know, I really feel I could write a book, because so much was done, and much of it was not publicized and maybe should have been, but...
So, maybe in your next career, you could write a book.
I know about that. But it was a lot of years, because 23 years on the college board, 13 years on the Menlo Park Board, and on this, not Menlo Park, but rather Sequoia Board. But in addition, I was PTA President of Ensmol and very involved with the elementary schools too. And my children and grandchildren all graduated from our local schools, and I'm proud to say did very well. So, thank you for your honor. You were very thoughtful.
All right. Now, we're going to move right along. So, our next presentation, proclamation, is to honor our councilmember Carlson, who's resigning his council seat as of July 1st. He and his wife Shirley have decided that they want to spend more time together, and if you know how much they love each other, you can understand them and travel more and be with each other and enjoy each other. So, we have two notable dignitaries with us this evening. First, I'll introduce Chris Hunter, who is the Chief of Staff for Supervisor Don Horsley, 3rd District, San Mateo County, and he would like to just say something about Councilmember Carlson. Would you like to go down there?
Good evening, Chris Hunter. It's my honor to represent Supervisor Don Horsley today, and Mayor Lewis, and honorable councilmembers and staff. This is a resolution signed by all five of the San Mateo County Supervisors, and to honor Jerry Carlson, who was appointed to the Atherton Council first in January 21st, 2006, and then elected twice by the public. Jerry Carlson demonstrated a commitment to the well-being of the Town of Atherton, served on the Town Rail Audit, Finance, Transportation, and General Plan Committee and the Town Center Task Force. And whereas Jerry Carlson used his financial background and expertise to guide the Town of Atherton towards fiscal stability, including influencing establishment of an audit committee. And whereas in his capacity as a councilmember, Jerry Carlson served as liaison with such key community groups as the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, the Atherton Danes, and the Atherton Civic Interest League. And whereas Jerry Carlson has represented Atherton on a variety of regional committees, including the Association of Bay Area Governments, City-County Association of Governments, and the League of California Cities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County hereby honors and commends Jerry Carlson for his longtime commitment to the Town of Atherton. On behalf of all citizens, the Board expresses its appreciation for Jerry Carlson's numerous contributions to the community and wishes him luck in all of his future endeavors and travels. Congratulations.
My goodness, I didn't expect this. Please convey my thanks to the Board of Supervisors. I've certainly enjoyed working with them. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So, you should probably just stay right there. We have one other dignitary, Mark Hirschman, who is our District Director for Senator Jerry Hill's office, 13th District. Mark?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, honorable councilmembers. It's a delight always to be in Atherton, but especially to be in such esteemed company with Trustee Hausman, and congratulations to you on your retirement. And with Councilmember Carlson, whom I've had the pleasure of serving with, and who Senator Hill and Assemblymember Gordon have had the pleasure of working with for these last seven years now. They went fast, didn't they? So, it's my great delight to present this resolution on behalf of the state to the honorable Jerry Carlson, from both Senator Hill and Assemblymember Gordon, signed by both of them. It includes much of the very same attributes and wonderful accomplishments of your tenure, as recited by Mr. Hunter. I won't go through those again. But what I think it speaks to and captures the spirit is somebody who really held public service close to their heart, who did everything he could on behalf of the Town of Atherton, both locally and regionally, because Councilmember Carlson took it upon himself to well represent Atherton in meetings near and far, having seen him travel on behalf of the interests of the town, and represented the town very, very well. And that's what Senator Hill and Assemblymember Gordon asked me to convey here this evening. So, congratulations to you, and especially congratulations to your spouse, and wishing you all the best in all your future endeavors.
Thank you so much, and please convey my thanks to Senator Hill and to the Assemblyman. How is SP 557 doing?
Senator Hill's Phil.
I knew there was going to be a test, so I brought my hand held, and we're going to meet right afterwards for coffee and go over. Thank you for your...
So, Councilmember Carlson, I just ask you to say one word.
Come up here.
You want to do it up here?
If that's all right with you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
So, we have a plaque for you, presented to Vice Mayor Jerry Carlson, the Town of Atherton 2013, in recognition for your many years of dedicated service to our community. So, here's a lovely plaque that you can put on your new home out of Atherton. And then, we also do a proclamation. Our town is little, we don't have giant proclamations like the state officers. But it says much of the same thing, except I do want to read just one part of it, because it's something that I really feel in my heart, that throughout Jerry's years on council, he has been a true statesman and a role model for future councilmembers by conducting himself with dignity and respect towards colleagues and engaging in instructive dialogue through thoughtful and circumspect questioning, listening, and presenting opinions only after careful deliberations. And so, then it goes on to say all the wonderful things that he has done for our town, that many committees he's served on over the last seven and a half years. And Jerry, honestly, I am truly sad that you're leaving, and I'm truly happy that I had the opportunity to serve with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, may I make a couple of comments here? First of all, I just want to say I stand in awe of Helen and everything that she has done, and thank you for your many, many years of service to the community and to the region. It's just incredible what you've been able to do.
Thank you.
Been an interesting time for both myself and my wife Shirley. We've both been quite engaged in the community in various ways. The council job at times has been disappointing and frustrating, however. One of the frustrations was being involved in a lawsuit for two years by being sued by a resident for not voting to put this particular person on a town committee. On the other hand, there've been very many rewarding times that I shall truly cherish the rest of my life. And particularly proud of, and particularly found rewarding, to have been able to encourage a number of town residents to become constructively engaged in the town's government. Our residents need to have timely and reliable information to know what's going on, to generate their interest, and make them want to be part of town government. I'm very optimistic about the course the town is now taking and the processes that are being used to reach its goals. I think we have a competent and professional staff that is necessary to reach the goals. It'll be exciting to see the accomplishments that can be attained over the next several years. So, thank you, residents, staff, mayor, and council. Town has a great future ahead of it.
I think we may have a resident or two who may want to say something at this time. I'll open it up for public comment. Use the mic.
Very happy to be here this evening, but I can't trump the accolades given to you by Senator Hill for the Board of Supervisors or the town. All I can say is to you and Shirley, you've been wonderful people to be residents of Atherton and help our town with everything you've done, both of you, from all the time that you've been here. And I hope that we will remain good friends in the future, and I just thank you very much for winning that election back in January 2006.
Thank you, Phil.
So, anyone else?
Jerry, you know, I spent a lot of time with you on the rail committee for five or six years. You've done a yeoman's job in representing Atherton in the streets and alleys of California, because it hasn't been clean. And I think you did a yeoman's job at the Joint Powers Board in working on the lawsuit. And I just know that the rail committee just applauds you for your efforts, because you were our leader. And on the finance committee, the same thing. So, I just, I hope you know what you're doing here, because we really are going to be missed, and it's going to be a challenge to get along without you. So, I just wish you and Shirley well, and if there's anything we can do to help you, we want to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Could I just have my wife Shirley stand up?
Thanks, lady, for all your support.
Thanks, Ben. So, we have another comment regarding Councilmember Carlson.
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry, I've had the pleasure of working with you at two levels, or actually getting to know you at two levels. One personally, you're a great guy, but she's terrific. The second one is, it wasn't really mentioned, is your role in founding Peninsula Cities Consortium to take on this Frankenstein called High-Speed Route. Where's Mark? Okay, you got it, Mark. Get the guy to vote the right way the next time. This is destroying our community.
He knows.
And although the people who are elected in the front would agree with me, they'll keep their mouths shut. The work that you did was not just in asking the right questions, which always guides an agenda, but in keeping a sense of dignity about the process by which we have challenged, and I think successfully challenged, the foolishness of the idea of driving a train at 220 miles an hour outside of our door. Thank you for that very much.
Thank you, Beth.
We have another speaker?
I have no plaques. I have no proclamations. But as a resident of Atherton, I want to thank you for your service to our city. I also want to thank you for your service to Selby Lane School. But most of all, I want to thank you for your kind, considered, gentle way of dealing with issues in the city, and your civility, and the example you set that I think councils going forward should take. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you so much.
Jack Raymond served with Jerry for many years on the rail committee. Jerry first joined the council in 2005, and before very long, a new life will arrive. Say goodbye to committees, ours and neighboring cities, but friendships remain and survive. He came to the council prepared, for the town he always has cared. Years of service as resident, Civic Interest League President, on the council, no effort is spared. Almost eight years he's given the town, and decided it's time to step down. Missed a chance to be mayor again and lose more white hair again, but does not need more renown. He chaired the town's rail committee to prevent high-speed trains through our city and tree devastation from electrification by Caltrain, which would be a great pity. There's no pension plan, no big Rolex watch, no gold parachute, not even a swatch. So, wind down now, Jerry, and reclaim your life. Spend more time with your family and cuddle your wife.
Jack, I must have a copy of that.
So, seeing no more. Oh, we do have one more, in reference to Jerry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Jerry, I've known you for many years, going back before these councils, before you were the council or this council, when we had councils we weren't too proud of, and you showed your efforts then as you do now. I have a letter written here for the second parcel tax which lost, and it's why I'm voting no on Measure C, the parcel tax, not because you're against the parcel tax, but you're against the way it was being handled by the council. So, the continuation of the parcel tax should be deferred until the town council has considered other alternatives. I won't read the whole thing, including items. The proponents of the parcel tax would lead you to believe services will have to be curtailed, and the town will be in danger of dire consequences, not thinking it'd be further from the truth. The council must confront the issues that are still unresolved and implement needed reforms in the government. Sincerely, Jerry Carlson. And I think you showed a lot of guts in those days, taking those people on, as you take on everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. So, I'm going to close our public comments about Councilmember Carlson's retirement. I think it's obvious that we will miss him in our town. So, the next item on our agenda is a presentation by the A-BAG representatives for the One Bay Area Plan. It's probably a 20-minute presentation, so if any of the members who came to honor Jerry would like to leave at this time, this would be a good time to go. So, I'm just wanting to let you know, it will be at least a 20-minute presentation. Are we ready? And then after this, we will have a public comment.
Can you hear me on my stand right here and speak? So, good evening, everyone. My name is Gillian Adams. I'm a Regional Planner with the Association of Bay Area Governments, and I'm here this evening to give you some background information about the draft Plan Bay Area, including some information about the planning process, the forecast and regional growth strategy for housing and jobs, the transportation investment strategy, and some details about the feedback that we've received about the draft plan and the remaining steps prior to adoption, which is scheduled to occur July. So, Plan Bay Area is the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy that A-BAG and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission are required to create as a result of Senate Bill 375.
I think we're going to have a little bit of difficulty hearing you, sir. Is there a place to send that? Close the doors, lock out the trains. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Let's go. Let me try that. Is that any better?
I think it's starting off.
Yeah.
So, Plan Bay Area is the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy that A-BAG and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission are required to create as a result of Senate Bill 375. As a regional land use and transportation strategy, the plan gives the region the opportunity to tackle problems that cross jurisdictional boundaries. As you can see from this list, the goals of the plan include integrating land use and transportation planning, reducing per capita greenhouse gas emissions, housing the region's population at all income levels, building on local plans, stretching the available revenues through smart investments, increasing the region's economic competitiveness, preserving our natural environment, and helping to ensure a healthy environment for our children and grandchildren. And I want to be clear that although Plan Bay Area is a long-range plan that looks ahead 30 years, A-BAG and MTC are required by law to update it every four years, which gives us an opportunity to continually refine the plan to reflect new information and new priorities. Also, Senate Bill 375 is very explicit about the fact that the regional plan does not override local land use control. So, cities and counties continue to have the authority to make decisions about how their communities will grow. So, the major steps of the Plan Bay Area process have included identification of performance targets to guide development of the plan, several stages of scenario development, performance analysis of the different scenarios, and a refinement based on the feedback that we've received. The process all along has been framed by extensive comments received through public meetings, focus groups, telephone polls, and written comments. We're currently developing the final draft of the plan, which is, again, scheduled for adoption by A-BAG and MTC on July 18th. So, a quick overview of the amount of growth forecasted for the region between 2010 and 2040. So, by 2040, the Bay Area was expected to grow by 1.1 million jobs. and housing growth in areas supported by amenities and infrastructure. A big part of this was the adoption of nearly 170 locally nominated priority development areas, which are places near transit identified by local jurisdictions for new housing and jobs. Although all of the PDAs are planning for more growth, there's a great deal of diversity throughout the region in the scale and character of the growth envisioned by each community. The priority development areas work together with the locally nominated priority conservation areas, which are open spaces, habitat areas, and farmland identified for preservation. PDAs and PCA's complement one another because promoting growth in PDAs takes development pressure off of the region's open spaces and agricultural lands. So this is a map showing the priority development areas and priority conservation areas in San Mateo County. It's, sorry, very hard to see the priority conservation areas, but they're primarily located on the western side of the county. And the priority development areas are primarily located along El Camino Real and around the Caltrain stations. And Atherton does not have a priority development area or a priority conservation area. So for the region as a whole, nearly 80% of new housing units and more than 60% of new jobs are projected to be in the priority development areas. Together, the PDAs make up only 3% of the region's land. So for the areas without priority development areas, we expect to see very minimal changes to areas such as single-family neighborhoods and other locations. Reflecting local input and opportunities to leverage regional transportation investments, about 40% of new jobs and housing are located in the region's three major centers, Oakland, San Francisco, and San Jose. So here's a table showing the amounts of growth for all of the jurisdictions in San Mateo County. And as you can see, for housing units, for Atherton, it's a relatively small amount of growth relative to other jurisdictions in the county, about 200 units or so over the 30 years. And for jobs, it's about 500 jobs over the 30-year span. So with regard to the transportation investments, the plan, there's a total of $289 million that's targeted for investment over the next 30 years, between now and 2040. And Plan Bay Area makes investments in the region's transportation network that support job growth and new homes in existing communities by focusing a vast majority of the investments, I think the total's about 88% of the funds, on maintaining and boosting the existing transit and transportation systems, including roads. And the investments are guided by six primary strategies. And just to summarize quickly, a lot of these focus on, again, investments in the existing transportation system, trying to provide the capital needs for operating expenses for transit and road improvements, supporting the jurisdictions that are taking on a lot of growth, trying to direct resources in their direction, and then also looking at new transportation investments that demonstrate that they, using a cost-benefit analysis, that they would show increased return on investment. And then also, I just want to highlight the county investment priorities. I think, as you all know, working with the congestion management agencies like CKAG, local jurisdictions, identify their own transportation needs and priorities, and that's supported by Plan Bay Area. And so some of the key investments identified in Plan Bay Area for San Mateo County as a whole, Caltrain electrification and frequency improvements, bus rapid transit along El Camino Real, corridor improved, excuse me, interchange improvements along the 101 corridor, and then again, investments in the priority development areas and protection of the priority conservation areas. So at this stage, like I said, we released our draft planned Bay Area on March, in March, and the deadline for receiving comments was May 16th. We received a total of 588 oral and written comments from people throughout the region. This list here shows some of the key issues that were consistently identified in the feedback that we got. ABAG and MTC staff have developed recommendations about these issues that are currently being considered by ABAG and MTC committees for trying to figure out whether they should be included in the final draft of the plan. And so the upcoming meetings that we have prior to our scheduled adoption date of July 18th, ABAG is holding a special meeting of its executive board tomorrow night, and the agenda packet provides a lot of information, more detail, about those policy recommendations that they're considering, as well as just a summary of all the feedback that we've heard and other issues like that relative to finalizing the plan. ABAG's Administrative Committee and MTC Planning Committee will meet July 12th again, I think, talking about the same topics, and then there'll be a joint meeting of the ABAG Executive Board and MTC Commission on July 18th, again, scheduled for adoption of the plan and EIR. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Bring it to council to ask any questions.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight. The question I've asked, and other CKAG board members have asked as well, is where's the water gonna come from to carry out this plan?
I think that's an issue that I think has been addressed to a certain extent at kind of the regional level in the Environmental Impact Report. Going forward, I think it's certainly a question that we have to address in more detail in terms of trying to figure out the impacts of the growth.
Okay. Councilmember Dobby?
Yes. I'm interested in maintaining the open space in San Mateo County. There are a fairly large number of organizations, maybe not fairly large, certainly many, who are buying up the land, people like Post, so that they can keep it...